Peace, peace, beautiful beings. I hope you're all doing okay and thriving and breathing and nourishing yourselves and resting and laughing. I want to bring some peace to your life with today's video. We're going to be talking all about ways to calm your nervous system, which I think every single one of us can learn and can appreciate. Because our nervous systems deal with a lot of stress on a daily basis. Even if you're living a harmonious life with very little stress triggers, your nervous system is still working hard for you every day. And anything that we can do to help support that, to help support the things that we are consuming with our eyes, with our bodies, with our being, our energetic being, it's helpful and can be a good tool to have, some of these tools that I'll be sharing with you today. So, thank you for watching and please stay until the end of this video. If you are interested in a breathwork session, I lead a little miniature breathwork class right at the end. It's probably like six to eight minutes of your time. I truly hope that you'll make time so that you can drop into your center before you click out of this video and maybe click out of YouTube. But not before subscribing, right? So before we continue, I want to say thank you to The Reserve for sponsoring today's video because they and their products are today's first feature for tools that can help you reset your nervous system. And I want to talk about the adaptogens that The Reserve carries. So you all know that I'm a Reserve superfan. My cabinet is stocked with every type of matcha that they sell, every type of adaptogen powder that they sell. They are my one-stop shop for superfood powders and high-quality mushroom powders and matcha. I love matcha and I've shared them with you all many, many times. So I have a video on this channel all about adaptogens. If you want to really, really dive deep on the nerdiness of what they actually are. But essentially, adaptogens are plants that help us adapt, as you see. They help our adrenal glands, they help our stress hormones, they help us relax, reset, and our nervous systems go from fight-or-flight mode to rest mode, so that we can properly operate in this stressful world. The beautiful thing about adaptogens is these herbs grow in stressful climates, top of the mountain where it's really, really cold or in really scorching hot deserts. And it's a beautiful parallel of Mother Earth that shows us that these plants that endure these hardcore conditions are here to help us endure these hardcore conditions. So some of the adaptogens that I use almost on a daily basis come from The Reserve. And I want to share them with you because they have given me an amazing discount code for you to get them now at a really good price. Ninety-nine percent of the time, I'm getting my daily adaptogens in through my coffee because I love coffee. If I could, I would drink it every day. I try not to drink it every day. And if I'm not drinking coffee, I'm drinking The Reserve matcha. But if I'm drinking coffee, I'm putting adaptogenic powders in it. And that's because coffee and the caffeine in coffee tends to stress us out a little bit, stress out our nervous systems, make us a bit jittery, spike up the adrenal glands, which helps us regulate our stress hormones. And sometimes if you're abusing coffee, especially if you're drinking coffee on an empty stomach every day, you are really making your adrenal glands work overtime, which over time is going to make you have a weaker stress response. So adding adaptogens to it can sort of fortify your coffee so that that spike and that adrenal hit is not as intense. And it helps the energy last a bit longer, it helps balance the mood, just sort of helps ground it down for me. So my favorite adaptogen to add to coffee is ashwagandha. The flavor matches perfectly and it's a wonderful morning adaptogen to take because I find that it's wonderful for pre-workout. It gives me that strength that I need, helps with that muscle strain, helps with the energy, and sort of sustains the energy that I get from coffee. And I love The Reserve makes small batches of their powders so that when you are ordering, you're getting something that's very fresh. Because a lot of other companies will have these powders that are on their shelves for months and months and months and months, and they're losing potency, they are. So thank you, The Reserve, for prioritizing freshness. It's very important when you're ordering powders. So also maca is a favorite of mine. You've heard me talk about it before. Maca is wonderful for getting the juices flowing, if you know what I mean. Like this pair right here is wonderful. If you're planning on spending some alone time with your partner and you want to have some energy going, but also wonderful for pre-workout, also great for muscle strength and endurance. And maca has an affinity for hormones as well, helping heal the hormones and hormonal balance, especially for the female body. So these are my top two that are always in my cabinet, always getting fresh bags when I need them. Lion's mane is a mushroom that is wonderful for the brain. So if I am having a day where I'm going to be working a lot on the computer, I might just put some lion's mane in my coffee. Or if I want more mushroom powder, then I will put their energy and mood mushroom blend into my coffee because then I'm getting lion's mane, chaga, reishi, and cordyceps, all powerful fungi and all adaptogens ready to help me take on the day. And then they're all in this one blend. And the wonderful thing about mushrooms, or I guess something I should note, is that mushroom blends should be used in hot beverages or hot things. So I will add this to broths, to soups, to tea, and to coffee because the constituents in the mushrooms that really help us are pulled out by heat. So I wanted to drop that tip in there that this is a really, really good blend if you're looking for an all-around mushroom blend that's going to help elevate you. Elderberry is also an adaptogen. Many people don't know that. But elderberry is getting its fame recently because we've all been in this stressful time due to the illness, I will call it. Elderberry has helped so many people who are looking for natural routes to support their... And so the elderberry power will support your energy during these times, but also give you that mood-balancing, stress-alleviating adaptogenic power. And these are fun. They have adaptogenic coffee. So you don't even have to worry about making the coffee like I do and adding adaptogens. If you don't want to, you can go ahead and just get their adaptogenic coffee blends. They have one in a container like this that's coffee, reishi, chaga, inulin, which is a fiber to help with digestion and such, and then coconut. And here are the Coffee Blast lattes. I love it because it's already got that coconut milk powder in it. So you get some creaminess, you get your coffee, you get your prebiotics that they put in there, which is what the inulin is, and you get the mushroom all in one little to-go packet. It's perfection and they taste really, really good. So you know me, I'm a plant mama. I will always, always advocate for plants over anything. And adaptogens are here to help you if you're looking for any plant support. Thankfully, The Reserve has given me to share with you all, not ten, not twenty, not thirty, but fifty. You can go to the link in the description right now and get half off. And that's going to last for an entire month from the day that you click the link. Thank you for sponsoring today's video, The Reserve. And let me know in the comments below what you end up ordering and how it feels in your body. The next tool that we can use to help us manage stress, anxiety, depression, and to reset our nervous systems and support us is the biggest, most magnificent tool you can possibly think of that is 100% free. And that is... The sun, our magnificent sun. The beautiful, big, bright ball in the sky that so many of our ancestors and indigenous cultures worshipped as their god. The sun that provides us energy because we are energetic light beings. It provides our plants, our earth, warmth and energy. It's everything and it's here for us. I know that there is so much misleading information out there about how destructive the sun is for our bodies, for our skin. And it isn't serving us. It's not serving us to fear the sun. Yes, our skin can burn if we stay in the sun for too long, but that isn't a reason to douse yourself in cancer-causing chemicals to block yourself from it. It's very important for us to get some sun every single day without being blocked, right into our skin to rejuvenate us, to charge up our cells. Sunlight is our serotonin booster. It boosts serotonin and serotonin is a chemical that boosts our mood, elevates our mood, and helps us stay calm and focused. And sunlight plays a huge role in our hormonal balance, period. Because if our circadian rhythm is off, which is our hormonal rhythm, basically our inner time clock, if that is off, your hormones are off and every bodily function within you is unbalanced. So the circadian rhythm needs to have sunlight in the morning because that sun going through our pupils, not through the window, actually outside, helps tell our bodies it's time to wake up, it's time to regulate all the stress hormones. We're going to take on this day the best that we possibly can. Here are all the hormones that you need to have a peaceful and effective day. And then at night, the darkness tells our body to reduce the serotonin, increase the melatonin. And all of you know about melatonin because you can get it over the counter and just shove it down your throat and try to sleep. But it's not ideal for you to be taking artificial melatonin in pills or capsules because this is going to hinder your body's ability to naturally make melatonin for you. So I personally believe that taking melatonin is not ideal, especially if you're taking it every day or very regularly. It's best to help your body naturally produce melatonin. And the reason why so many of us are buying melatonin over the counter and trying to help our bodies sleep and so many of us aren't sleeping very well is because of the screens. The screens, beautiful beings. I have a very detailed video all about the sun and the blue light that we get from our screens and why it is really messing up our bodies. And that is because the light that comes out from our screens, our phones, tablets, laptops, and televisions mimics full-spectrum UV light. It completely mimics sunlight. So imagine what you're telling your body when it's 9:00 PM and your body is expecting to get the messages that it's time to go to sleep. It's expecting darkness and you're giving it full-blown sunlight in the form of a television or a phone or a tablet in your face. It's very confusing for your body and it will not release melatonin. It will release very little amounts and it's going to confuse the conversational pathways that are supposed to be happening. And it's going to keep giving you serotonin, it's going to keep giving you those hormones that keep you awake because it thinks that it's still daytime. And you already know, beautiful beings, if you're not getting proper sleep, you're definitely going to be having a hard time managing your stress. So I urge you, I urge you, I urge you to try your best to turn the screens off two to three hours before you go to bed. It's hard, I know, because so much of our life is on the screens. I have a hard time tempting that late-night TV show right before I go to sleep. I have a hard time tempting, getting away from the temptation of scrolling on Instagram right before I go to sleep, but it's not serving me and my body at all. So try it out, test out the difference. One way that you can try to get a little bit of both is by using blue-blocking glasses. And I've talked about these before in my blue-blocking video that you can check out. Or you can just really search "blue-blocking glasses" and it needs to be the red lenses or the dark yellow or orange lenses that are completely filtering out UV light so that you might be able to indulge in a little bit of phone use and a little bit of television use in the evening time. But think about how our ancestors operated. When the sun went down, they went to sleep. And when the sun came up, they woke up. Perfectly balanced circadian rhythms. That and the fact that there was way less toxins and pollution and terrible foods, but I digress. If you really want to use the sun to charge up and elevate into a supernatural being, sun your genitals. I'll drop some information below that will give you a little bit more information about that. Sunning your genitals, opening up your legs, and allowing the sun to enter into your yoni or these sunless regions, your perineum, your anus, top-notch charging up. Top-notch charging up. And there's information and studies out there to prove why this is so good. Yeah, look into it. Okay, now I want to tell you about two herbal products that help me when I'm feeling under stress or I feel like I need a nervous system reset. And it's going to be a shameless plug into my own online herbal apothecary, earthmommedicine.com. I make everything by hand. It's all organic herbs. Some of them I actually grow here on my homestead. And it's all made with so much love and gratitude for you all and all beings on this planet with the intention to heal you from the inside out. So I have two tinctures. An herbal tincture is just herbs and alcohol. In this case, organic vodka, but you can use all different types of alcohol to make an herbal tincture. And the alcohol pulls out all that good medicine from the herb and that is what a tincture is. It's medicine in a bottle, really. And I have two tinctures that are part of my line that are particularly wonderful for stress and anxiety, but they're different. So Heart Healer is actually my favorite and I'm always selling out of it. But I do have both of these in the shop right now if you want to move quickly and go get some. Heart Healer and the other reason why it's really wonderful in my heart, aside from really helping me cope with hard times, is the fact that I grow all of the motherwort here on the land. Like I'm not even buying bulk motherwort herb anymore because I'm able to grow all of it here. So when you buy a Heart Healer, it's like from seed to bottle, made by me, by my hands. It's so special. So Heart Healer is made, like I said, by motherwort. And motherwort is wonderful for calming an anxious heart. It's wonderful for any heart chakra pain that you're having. It's going to help soothe that and bust it wide open. It's wonderful for postpartum, absolutely wonderful for postpartum. It helps with after-birth pains also. If you want to use it for directly, directly postpartum as soon as you have your child. But also it supports your heart and your nervous system and your anxiety so wonderfully in postpartum because that's when your heart is busted open. You know, you just met your child, you just turned into this new woman. It's like such a tender, tender time and Heart Healer is wonderful for that. But just outside of postpartum, it's a fabulous daily support for anxiety and for a tender heart, for tender times in your being. I love Heart Healer for that. And it's got wonderful reviews on the website. I'm really happy to see the reviews coming in because it's a fairly new tincture, but people are really loving it. And then I have Spirit Soother and that is an oat straw tincture. And oat straw is one of those herbs that's really good for the nervous system. For someone who's got high-strung anxiety. I got a review the other day that literally said, "I just threw my Xanax out." Now, I'm not comparing the effects of Spirit Soother to Xanax at all. There is no comparison. They're very, very different on how they affect the body. But what that says to me is that this herb is really helping that person deal with those unbalanced times within their nervous system. Many herbalists say that oat straw is wonderful for that person who's like drinking a ton of cups of coffee a day, but you're still feeling wired and tired, which means your adrenals are shot, your nervous system is shot. If you're that type of person that feels like you just can't keep going and you're just overworking, overworking yourself and you're feeling that stress, then Spirit Soother is for you. Yes, you can combine these if you want. You can take them both if you want. I recommend taking one by itself just to sort of see what the one plant does in your body. But you can combine them if you want. If you're looking for something that's going to be more like daily support for anxiety, I would go with a Heart Healer. If you're looking for something that's like, "I'm having a panic attack and I need help right now", Spirit Soother is wonderful for like those immediate high-strung moments. But both of them are fabulous, so I had to do a shameless plug because I really believe in and love my medicine. Don't just listen to me. Go on earthmommedicine.com and look at the reviews. The reviews speak for themselves. And the last thing I want to talk about for handling stress is your daily habits. I know, this is the one that's like, "No! I don't want to meditate. I don't want to do all this elevating stuff because it's hard. It takes me out of my comfort zone." Yes, but it takes you out of your comfort zone to put you in a new level of comfort, to put you in an elevated level of comfort, an elevated way of being. So yes, I'm going to talk about meditation. Meditation is there for you. There's a reason why monks are sitting at the top of mountains, being and going inward because it is true cellular elevation to sit with ourselves. These brains are going very, very, very quickly. And the more we become an advanced civilization, advanced species, I should say, with all this technology that's meant to make our lives convenient, the more it makes our brains' systems inconvenient. Our brains are computers that need to be programmed and they will run on autopilot without our permission if we're not installing a proper program. And when we meditate, we're learning how to shut our mind off and be in control. When we don't meditate, our mind is in control and it starts using us and stressing us out and thoughts are coming in and out and it's hard to focus and it's hard to be in our bodies. So when we can sit with ourselves, we're able to be in our bodies more, we're able to show up in the present moment more, we're able to program our brains to be used as tools so that we can use our brain and not be our brain. So you don't have to do anything that's too crazy. It can be something very short. It can be an active meditation, like certain type of breathwork, or it can be sitting in stillness and in silence, or it can be guided. But I highly recommend at least five minutes a day. I honestly don't think that's enough, really. But if you have to just do five minutes a day, I mean, isn't the saying, "If you don't have 10 minutes to meditate a day, you should meditate for an hour"? Who said that? It's someone really famous and I'm embarrassed that I'm blanking on who said that. But it makes a lot of sense, right? You have a lot of time throughout the day that you're using for other things that you could dedicate to meditation. Tell the truth. Tell the truth. We just don't make the time for meditation because it's confronting and it's uncomfortable to sit and be with our thoughts. But I highly encourage you to do it. And right after this, I have a very quick, short meditation and breathwork session for you. But lastly, one other daily habit that I want to shed light on is what we are consuming. And that can definitely be food. You know, we want to eat mindfully. We want to eat organic, high-quality animal foods. If you're consuming animal foods, organic, high-quality vegetables and fruits, if you possibly can. I know it's not accessible to everyone, but try your best to put proper fuel in your body. That's definitely going to make a difference. And watch what we're consuming with our eyes and our ears as well. Watching the news every day, all day is really taking it out of you to hear all of the pain and nonsense going on in the world. And this goes for your relationships too. If you're in a romantic relationship, you're in a friendship, you have a relationship with a boss or a teacher or someone that you're looking up to, that you're working for, that is not serving you and is taking a toll on your nervous system, this is your sign to distance yourself from that because you get one time, one chance in this meat bag full of fat and bones and blood. It's a precious, precious gift to be here on this planet and to be existing in this human form. Don't waste it. Don't waste it being stressed out and in pain every day. You can do it. This is your sign that you can do it, that you can move forward into a new way of being. All right. Let's meditate. Get ready. So what I would love for you to do is to just find a place where you can sit down on the ground. And maybe it's a mat, maybe it's just your carpet or the plain floor. We're not going to be down there for too long. This is like six to eight minutes of your time, okay? Don't worry about what the clock says. Don't worry about what you have to do after this. It's just several minutes of your time, okay? You probably spend more of that time scrolling or doing other things that don't serve you as much. Am I right? Let's sit down and make some space for this breathwork. All right, beautiful beings, let's get started. So finding a comfortable place to sit. We're going to put our hands in prayer pose and allow our hands to gravitate deep into the center of our chest. And we're going to do something called tuning in. In Kundalini, we're using certain mantras in the Gurmukhi language, which is similar to Sanskrit, but it's called Gurmukhi. And we're going to do a mantra that helps us tune in to all of the teachers and guides and ancestors and angels that help us move throughout this world. So when we say this, we are thanking them and asking them to move through us as we infuse our body with breath and power. So the words are: Ad guray name, jugad guray name, sat guray name, siri guru deve name. And it's okay if you don't know these words. If you do, tune in with me. If not, just listen and vibrate with the words. We're going to take a deep breath in. Ad guray name, jugad guray name, sat guray name, siri guru deve name. Inhale. Ad guray name, jugad guray name, sat guray name, siri guru deve name. One more time, inhale. Ad guray name, jugad guray name, sat guray name, siri guru deve name. Inhale. We have arrived. Welcome to the space. Breathing. Coming home to our bodies. Now we're going to do left and right nostril breathing. You're going to take your left thumb and plug your left nostril and we're only going to be breathing out of our right nostril. Allow the left side of your body to completely disappear. It's like holographic. Imagine you only have a right side body. And inhale deep and exhale through the nose. The right side is masculine and energizing. So if you're ever feeling drowsy, you can do right side breathing and it will elevate you. One last deep breath here on the left, on the right nostril. Slowly put your left hand down and now we're going to use our right hand to plug our right nostril. And we're going to inhale through the left side. Left nostril breathing in and out through the nose. Imagining the right side of our body dissolving away. And we only have a left side. It's the feminine side, creative, flowing, free, calm. If you're ever feeling wired, you can do left nostril breathing to calm you down. Breathing in deep through the left nostril. And return your hands to your knees. And now lovingly invite breath in through both nostrils. Deep inhale in and exhaling through the nose. You might be feeling a bit more balanced now. But we're not done. Now we're going to do some spinal flexes. They say if you have a flexible spine, you will never get old. Of course, it's not true, but you are as old as your spine. So let's keep it flexible. We're going to inhale when we push our belly out and exhale as we concave and pull our belly in. And we're going to do this only through the nose. So once we get that breath of fire started, only through the nose. Inhale as you open yourself up. Exhale as you pull in. And we can pick up the rhythm if you want to keep up with me. This is called Breath of Fire. We're moving that Kundalini energy from the base of our spine all the way up to our crown. It's power, beautiful beings, power. In through the nose, out through the nose. We won't be here for very long, so try your best. If you really want to tone it up, tune it up, gaze those eyes into your third eye. So look, keep your eyes closed, but look up into your third eye. That's going to stimulate your pituitary gland. That's that innate knowledge and wisdom and intuition. It's also stimulating the gland that secretes hormones to keep your body in balance. Breath of fire. Keep it going. We're almost there. You got this. You are a powerful being. All right, inhale, deep, 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 deep. Hands above your head in a prayer pose. I'm showing you the mudra now that you can do for extra power. Thumbs crossed. Exhale. One last big one. Inhale, 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 all the way. Bring in all of your air. Hold it, hold it, hold it. Let that energy flow up. Exhale. Hands down, release. Almost done, beautiful beings. We're going to do one last meditation here. This is a meditation for a calm heart. So if you want to just move your neck around, move your chest around, loosen up that space. We're going to be sitting in this meditation for about three minutes. What you're going to do is place your left hand on the center of your chest at heart center. The palm is flat against the chest and the fingers are parallel to the ground, pointing to the right. Then we're going to make what's called giyan mudra with the right hand. We're going to touch the tip of the index finger with the tip of the thumb. Raise the right hand up to the right side as if you're giving a pledge. Your palm faces forward. Three fingers not in giyan mudra are pointing up. The elbow is relaxed near the side with the forearm perpendicular to the ground. Concentrate on the flow of your breath. Regulate each bit of breath consciously. Inhaling slowly and deeply through both nostrils. Inhaling, exhaling. Zoning in. Zoning in. The proper home of the subtle force prana, which is that energy, that breath, that fire, is in the lungs in our heart. The left palm is placed at the natural home of prana, creating a deep stillness at this point. And the right hand that throws you into action and analysis is placed in a receptive, relaxed mudra and put in the position of peace. So this entire posture induces the feeling of calmness. And it technically creates a still point for the prana at the heart center. Inhaling and exhaling peacefully out of your nostrils. Breathing, this time is for you. Don't worry about the clock, we'll be done in a minute. Be with yourself. Be with your breath. Emotionally, this meditation adds clear perception to your relationships with yourself and others. If you're upset at work or in a personal relationship, sit in this meditation for three to 15 minutes before you decide how to act or respond. Then act with your full heart. This meditation strengthens the lungs and the heart. Inhaling. Exhaling. It's okay to be in your body. You are safe. Breathing. Breathing. Give me about 30 more seconds here, beautiful beings. You're doing so well. Inhaling and exhaling, being present with your breath and your body. Thanking your body. Let's take one last big, deep breath together and exhale out of the mouth. Inhale. Exhale. You did so good. You can now go back to a neutral pose. Palms by your side. Maybe roll your head around, roll your body around. Let that energy move through you. And we're going to return our hands to prayer pose for one last tuning out. And for this tuning out, we will sat nam. Inhale. Exhale. One more inhale. One more, this will be a big one, inhale big. Sat nam means I am truth. You are truth, beautiful being. I bow to you. You deserve to feel at home in your body. So I hope this video helped you and brought you peace and shed some light on some things that you can do to bring peace to your body and your mind and your spirit. Some tools that you can also purchase to help you elevate yourself and support your nervous system and your stress responses. Some free tools as well, like the sun and meditation. I'm sending you all of my love. Thank you again to The Reserve for sponsoring today's video. If you're looking for some adaptogens and some superfood powders, The Reserve is definitely the place to visit. All the love, beautiful beings. Peace.